That's where Bend Over comes along.
Got my bean, got my pooter.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Board of Commissioners, Town in Pittsburgh, regular meetings, Monday, February 9th, 2015. We could just bow our heads for a moment in silence, please. Thank you. James, you were telling the...
Sir, I pledge my pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands as our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to either approve the agenda set forth or to modify the agenda.
Would we approve the consent of the agenda set forth?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the consent agenda. We need to either have a motion to approve the consent agenda and propose a motion that will modify the consent agenda. Is that moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that therefore ends the consent agenda. Let's go forward with our regular meeting agenda. We have citizens' matters and no one has signed up for that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Anyone would like to comment at this time? If you would like to add your name, you can. If not, then let's move forward with our own business. We have an ABC Board update by Mr. Jim Nass. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and behalf of fellow board member Ned Kelly and Dick Harris and our General Manager Nancy Gooch and our Finance Officer Craig Ward, I want to present to you the half-year report. We are at the half year of our business and we are having a very, very good year. Total revenues are up $62,210 over last year. That's a little over $10,000 per month above last year. And considering that we really had a great year last year, that quarter was really phenomenal, I believe. Now, at the same time that we've had that increase in revenue, our operating expenses are actually down $2,687 from last year, about $450 a month, which is a tribute to the staff because they're doing a lot more with less. And they should be congratulated for that and we do that at our board meetings. As a part of this overall revenue picture, mixed beverage sales are included and I want to mention that specifically. If you might recall, that's the liquor that we sell to restaurants that they resell to customers in the form of drinks. And that business is also up over last year. And that's not only good news for the ABC Board, but I think it's an indicator of economic good news for the town as a whole because that business, that restaurant business is continuing to grow. I also want to point out to you that the last three and a half years, we have not taken a nickel out of our savings account. So that continues to grow. And we sit there with a balance of over $67,000. And when we originally did the remodel, we calculated an ROI out over five years and we have met those targets within three. So that's all good news. And as a part of that, I am pleased to present tonight the quarter two checks to the town in the amount of $12,137. So I would like to make a note, Mayor Protown, I would like to review these checks on behalf of the board.
Thank you so much.
Is there any questions? I think the only thing we might mention is we did, you might notice when you go by the store, we did some major cleanup along the wall facing the other building north and it looks so much better. It just is another step in the process there. So we're pleased with that. I'm looking forward to our spring flowers. We made some moves and plants to better positions for the spring, so we hope it looks good. But if there's any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer those.
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to commend you and the board and the staff there at the ABC Store. I think you've done a great job to have revenues up $62,000 from last year this time. I think that says a lot and thank you for your work. Certainly appreciate it.
Very good.
Thank you. I attend, I'm liaison to the ABC Board and I attend those meetings and every time I'm in the store, things are looking better. I think you're providing fantastic leadership. I think the other board members are engaged and really doing a great job. And I think a lot is to do with Nancy Gooch, the manager as well, who's managing Siler City and Pittsburgh. So by all accounts, doing a great job and thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I tell you, we've got a great group, great staff of people there to work with and it's enjoyable. We keep trying to do a few more things as we can, as you know, for particularly the full-time people there, to make their lives a little bit easier as well. And we appreciate the support of the town and particularly Mr. Piocco for attending our meetings. There are a lot of boards that don't see someone from the appointing body very often. We're lucky that we have that relationship. So again, thank you very much and hopefully next quarter, we'll be able to deliver some more money to the town.
Thank you. Next, move on to the extension of the MUPD zoning and water and wastewater and capacity allocation from Pittsburgh Place. Mr. Bruce Beck?
Thanks, Mayor Protown Baldwin. Recall at the last meeting, we discussed a request from Pittsburgh Place Partners to extend their mixed use plan development, MUPD zoning classification. It was granted by the town back in '07. They also were requesting that we consider extending an allocation of 15,000 gallons per day of water and wastewater capacity for a period of three years as well. In order to do that, they suggested that the board consider at some point a tax amendment to the town's ordinance, town ordinance, which would allow the town to extend their zoning for a period of up to three years. Subsequent discussion during that meeting, the Pittsburgh Place Partners indicated that they would be willing for the board to consider an extension of zoning and an extension of capacity for a period of one year, during which time then they would continue to try to develop the property and then likely come back and apply for a tax amendment for the remaining two years, the capacity at which, if not used in that first year, would be slightly reduced. You'll also recall that during that meeting, the board asked for some clarification, discussion of capital recovery fees, which I would be recommending that the board consider if the extension were to go beyond one year. And that's kind of where we were at, at that point in time. And just one other note, I think originally, I see Mr. Steyer's in the audience tonight and should be willing to help answer any questions about the project with the Pittsburgh Place Partners' direction at this point. But I would also point out too, that I think the original request was for an extension of, and correctly, if I'm wrong, Mr. Steyer's five years. It was during, it was after that time that, after a little bit of back and forth, that that request be reduced to three years. And now, of course, before you tonight, we're looking with the attachments that you have in the packet, a resolution, a resolution to extend the mixed use plan development until October, I believe, October 7th, 2015. There is also, there is also a, there is also an agreement to amend, to amend the extension to allow for capacity, the extension of capacity for by 15,000 gallons during that first year. In other words, to continue the water and wastewater capacity extension of 15,000 gallons for until October 7th, 2015. What I would point out in that time is that given that Pittsburgh Place Partners is continuing, I guess, to operate off of an assumption that there was a prepayment or a reservation of that capacity paid some number of years ago in an amount that was well under market rate, I would advise the board that, I think there is some concern that however much capacity is actually developed of that 15,000 gallons per day, so in other words, if the developer were to come in and develop a significant amount of that wastewater capacity and reservation, they would be doing so at far less than market rate. But I think based on the conversation that I heard last week, this was kind of initially the direction that I thought might be palatable for us to go. Now again, as I mentioned, that were it to go, if you were to approve both of these documents and go up to that one-year period and during that time, if we reviewed a request to extend it beyond two years, that the calculations for the capital recovery fees then be fully put into place, which would obviously be, as you can see, discussed in my memo, would obviously be something that was far closer, well, actually technically pretty close to what we have currently. Keep in mind that the capital recovery fees that identify here, we're figuring, there's that gross area, that net area, we would still have to fine tune those estimates to come up with something exact so that it would pay a little bit less than what you see here. There was also some question, I think, at the last meeting as to whether or not we were properly applying the zoning district to the capital recovery fees. This is again, an MUPD zoning classification. We don't have a direct zoning district identified within our budget ordinance for MUPD. We have C2, which is highway commercial and that's what we figured it, that's how we figured it in the last memo at the last meeting. We also have a classification of PUD, planned unit development. To this point in time, PUD has always been, has always been more of a residential classification, so I don't know that this is a neat fit. We're probably looking at something as C2, being a little bit closer unless we were to do something with the ordinance. So essentially, what we're looking at again is, is a resolution to extend the zoning for a period of up until October 2015. And then also I proposed an agreement to extend the water and wastewater capacity allocation of 15,000 gallons to that one-year benchmark as well, with, I guess, some of those caveats that I know regarding, regarding the market rate. And with that, I would open the door for any questions or if you would have, of course, as I indicated, Mr. Steyer's, who's representing Pittsburgh Place Partners, is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce Beck. Comments from the board, questions?
If I may just speak very briefly, this is Baldwin.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. My address is 1101 Payne Street, and I'm here on behalf of Pittsburgh Place Partners. We've had some good conversation with Mr. Bruce Beck, appreciate his working with us. I think under the circumstance of where we are today, that it makes sense, as your ordinance clearly allows today to extend the zoning classification for one year and we are in support of that resolution. And we ask that you approve that resolution to approve the extension of the zoning one year. To the extent that we're into that one year already, we have prospects, as we explained in the last meeting, of some tenants and buyers that are looking at that, we would ask that you also approve the second proposal before you, the second document, which is to extend the water allocation that had been purchased and owned for one more year as well. So we ask that you vote to approve both of the two documents that are in your packet paired by staff. Recognizing, if I may just add, recognizing though that this is kind of a temporary measure, I think, I was trying to think, what makes sense going forward from here? And it seems like to me the zoning is an easy call. To extend the zoning three more years, two more years for a total of three years is low-hanging fruit. I understand that the hurdle may need to be cleared for the text amendment. So I do think it would be appropriate to, with the specificity that we've already provided to staff and the board with our December 23rd letter, to go ahead and schedule a public hearing on the text amendment for the three years. It doesn't have to be your next meeting, but say a meeting in, your second meeting in March, first meeting in April, run concurrently with the request that it be extended for additional two years so the low-hanging fruit of the zoning extension gets approved. And we know we have that in place. If we don't have that, then we don't necessarily need to go to the harder issue of the water and wastewater. If we know that we have approval of the two additional years, say in the next month or two, then Mr. Bruce Beck suggested a workshop to look at how to move forward with water and wastewater, and that makes a lot of sense to me. Doing that now before we know we have another two years to continue to try to market the property with the current zoning, seems to be a little bit of a carload ahead of the horse. So for tonight, I would appreciate your approving both the two proposals that you received in your agenda packet. Going forward, it seems to be most efficient to have, go ahead and instruct staff to post the notice for the text amendment and to move forward at your convenience in March or April with that two additional years and then move forward with the harder issue of water and wastewater at that time. That would be my very modest proposal for how to move forward tonight. Be happy to answer your questions.
Questions from the board? Comment?
I'll say that I'm in favor of extending the MUPD for the single year that is presently granted authority via ordinance, but I am not in support of extending the water and sewer allocation. We have a process that we've been using for a couple of years now where developers come in and request an allocation based on an estimate of what their development would require. And I think to this point, we've not denied anything. And so I would favor extending the MUPD, but then asking the developer to come back in and request an allocation.
Obviously, this proposal is a little unique situation than the request that kind of calls me. They did, you know, purchase this allocation. What's happened to market value and the rights over the last, since the purchase? It certainly functions beyond anyone's crystal ball and time the contracts are entered into. So it's a little different situation that we'd already purchased that, that had been extended by prior, the contract had been approved by prior Commissioners, had been extended by our prior Commissioners. Now, they all know that, that it's a slightly different situation because the value had been paid. But you are correct that that's why we're here today to ask for that extension, but I do understand your position.
And you know, I know it's been very difficult times. I'm very familiar with that and I want to be supportive as I can. The value that was paid is based on 2001 figure, it's 14 years later. Our water and sewer facilities are in dire need of revenue and for us not to use that asset to the full benefit of the town, I think is irresponsible. So asking that this project pays today's rate, I don't think is unreasonable to the development and again, I think it would be irresponsible to do otherwise at this time. So that's my rationale and that's my basis for my position.
Any additional comments?
I'm just curious how much that would delay things if they had to reapply for that? What the process would be and how long it would take?
I think it's been, gosh, a couple of weeks. Put together an estimate for Stewart to present to us. I don't, yeah, I don't think it's a big time constraint, but if you would please answer, Mr. Bass. But let me put words in your mouth.
No, that's correct. We've been handling it as administrative procedure and it's relatively simple request. There's not even a standard, you know, application, there's no fee involved and we turn, we just bring it up straight to the board.
Because it seems to me they're already, since they're, they've granted the one-year extension, it started in October, and they're already short on time, so I just want to make sure that this is not something that would get delayed.
I kind of, I like to say, I kind of agree with Commissioner Piocco regarding this. I don't have any problem with the year on the mixed use permit, but it is a difficult time for the town without water and wastewater. You can't keep going back to the problems of 2008, we've all been through it. So I just, that's all I got to say.
Well, I mean, I do believe the recession definitely impacted the purpose of this project and they clearly showed that they're committed to this project and I would like to see the town get behind it, but I understand the part about making sure they're paying fair market value for this period of commodities that we have.
Do you recommend an alternative for you?
No, I mean, I'm in favor that as long as we move forward because I can say there are, there are areas where they have to.
Any additional comments from the board?
I'll make a motion and we adopt a resolution extending the approval of Pittsburgh Place Mixed Use Plan Development.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They're on the move. Thank you, Mr. Bruce Beck. Move on to...
If I could just ask, what about, to the extent that we were hoping to initially have five years for the zoning, my suggestion about, do you have sufficient specificity to publish public notice for the text amendment? Could that be done sooner rather than later without us having to go through another application process for the text amendment? I don't know why that would be necessary or efficient, given the current posture and the specificity of what was presented on December 3rd.
Mr. Bruce Beck?
Technically, the Pittsburgh Place Partners would have to actually come in with an application to request the text amendment as opposed to you directing staff to post it. So once we receive that application, and I would recommend that Mr. Steyer's contact our office and we'll work you through that process, then we'll begin scheduling that process as we, as expediently as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Steyer. We can move on to the annexation request from Pittsburgh Ford. Mr. Bass?
You have in your packet a resolution authorizing the annexation request from Pittsburgh Ford. We have the public hearing is required by law and again, this is the law immediately adjacent to Pittsburgh Ford.
Comments from the board?
I think this was the initial idea of the board, so I make a motion that without the resolution, it would pose the annexation.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all. So let's move on to updates and reports. Mr. Bruce Beck?
Thank you. Couple of items, first of all, what, I believe by the next meeting, you'll actually, I'll be going live with this probably at some point this week, but if you've ever used Evernote, I'll be putting, I'll be putting my updates, I'll be putting my updates on Evernote and I'll be providing you guys with links for that and also providing a live link for the public so that they can go in and, you know, look at these updates basically in real time and then staff will have the ability to kind of go in and add it and update then on the fly. So I'm really looking forward to, hopefully, if that doesn't, if it doesn't help you and if it doesn't help the public, and I think it will, it's certainly helping me in keeping, keeping a lot of these things straight because I've gone as far as putting a lot of my more blunt made details of life on there. Only makes sense that I start putting these updates on there, trying to save a little time on that myself. So I'll be coming back, I'll be coming back with, I'll be putting this actually live and I'll send you out a notice on that. We can also put links live on the Facebook page there as well. So, but rather than, rather than going through these in hard form, and also too, I think, what I can do from this is put together a printed copy that shows just the most recent updates and putting that in the packets. So in other words, I would basically take this and then put this in tabular format so you can still get a hard copy of this at every meeting unless you told me you didn't want one and have been keeping up with it online. But either way, whatever works for you guys, that's, well, what we're trying to do. I happen to have a better way to keep some of this stuff straight because there's way too many things flying at me in a short amount of time, so. So let me go through some of these other things really quick. There was a, there was a question, I think recently regarding the ABC Board and I certainly, you guys are more than welcome to correct me, but if I'm off base, but I believe there was an inquiry as to whether full-time staff members at the ABC Board might be able to enjoy or get in with the town's health insurance. And we did some follow-up on that and it would be possible only if the ABC employees were town employees. So I don't, I talked to Mr. Bass a little bit about that and I don't know how that would be possible unless there are some other ideas out there. We did some follow-up on that and it doesn't look feasible at this point, but we're open for suggestions and if we think of anything else, we can, you know, we can survey that. Wastewater Treatment Plant, the professional engineering reporter, the PR, is moving forward at the next meeting and in fact, you should probably enjoy this meeting as far as its relative ease because the next meeting's going to have a bit more of a discussion. I believe we're looking at offering a recommendation for the wastewater PR at the next, at the next meeting. We've had some, some good meetings and some good interviews around that issue and I think that we're going to be in a pretty good position to recommend a firm that'll be able to give us some options as far as expanding our existing wastewater treatment plant on site. We also have a process ongoing with Mr. Royal and others as far as the, trying to figure out how inassest stormwater is infiltrating our sanitary sewer inflow or what we call III. We were successful in obtaining, obtaining some money in the form of a loan or no interest loan and we're putting together some information for that. We should be able to, we've been working out actually an in-house PR for that and I believe we're looking at... I believe we're looking at reporting out on that at the next meeting as well. Vernon, the Page Vernon Park project continues to move forward. We're getting, we're getting bids, a bid opening for that on February 17th, so we should be able to report out on that as well. The financing for the police vehicles, as you recall, you approved that, I don't know if it was this past meeting or the one before that, but we're closing on the financing on February 15th. After that, Chief Crutchfield will be obtaining the vehicles through the state bid process in contract. Once we have the vehicles, then Chief will be bidding out all of the attachments and gadgets and gizmos that go on the vehicles. And so unfortunately, it's not exactly like, you know, like buying a car that maybe you and I would buy, there's a lot of things that have to be made in terms of equipment and decals and so forth, and so that's, that's the other part of the process. You know, recall that the financing will cover all of that from basically the room up. Utility rate study, staff will be, as you recall, the last meeting, we did discuss some different alternatives with the help of the UNC's Environmental Finance Center, School of Government. We did look at some rate scenarios and some revenue scenarios, and I think what we'll do, and I don't know if it's going to be at this, this February 23rd meeting, is looking like it's going to be pretty busy, so we may be looking at the first meeting in March to do that. And basically, what we'd be doing is just looking for some guidance on that, and kind of trying to pare down what some of those, some of those suggestions were, and seeing what we need to do forward. The, we also had very recently a meeting with the Chad Park Preston Development's team on some next steps for, in particular, the wastewater treatment process for part of their development. And you recall at the retreat at the previous meeting, I suggested that we, that we take some of those alternatives and suggestions that have been put forward at the staff level today, and then present those on the 23rd, and then also have the School of Government's Environmental Finance Center come in and discuss not only the technical aspects of it, though, we're going to get into that, but start getting into more of the meaning of how we actually finance, construct, and operate those facilities moving forward, and they'll have some best management practices that we'll be able to take and start to digest. And again, I'm not looking to solve all of our problems on that evening, but I think we need to start this conversation of how we're going to be tackling that, that infrastructure issue moving forward. It's well established that it's going to be difficult for us to finance everything moving forward, so we have to be creative with how, to the extent that we're going to have these facilities in existence, to how we're going to build them and how we're going to operate them. And so we'll be able to discuss some options at that point. And I guess, I guess with that, except for to mention that work on the, work on the budget continues, there's going to be a couple of things that we're looking at also in the near future before we can really start presenting and running out the budget, and that's some things like defining, better defining our capital improvement program, and also putting, putting into effect a policy on our capital reserve fund, which we talked a lot about in this memo, but we're getting to the point now where the capital reserve fund is starting to get built up to a level where we can actually start doing some, some good things with it. But at the same time, I think we want a little bit more of a playbook for how we use it. And so that's sometimes something, too, that we're going to present you some options and get some feedback on it as well. So we've been pretty busy here, and a lot going on, obviously, and we're still doing it as best as we can, and certainly, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, you know, feel free to, feel free to stop by whenever you're busy at the time. With that, I would open up the door for anything else or any other questions or comments that you might have.
Mr. Bruce Beck, regarding the ABC Board employees, could you make some time for Jim Nass, maybe to sit down with you to better understand what the limitations are there? Maybe you could find some other solutions as far as the health insurance? Yes, yeah, please.
I'll do my best. Thanks. We'll regrow here tomorrow and figure out what we can.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's, there might be something there. There's about 20 boards in the state where those employees are, not employees in town, but are on their plans, so there might be something there to think about.
And you specifically have those particular towns?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Bruce Beck, for that, for those updates, and thank you for the summation of our, from our planning retreat. I'm sorry, that was really...
Yeah, I recognize the FYIs there. You have that summation there, and again, this is a living document. If there's something that looks sideways with that, let me know, and I'll speak with Mr. Royal on that. And I think it was a pretty good, you know, it was very helpful from my perspective, and I think it gave us a couple of other things to focus on in the near future. And then also, too, I mentioned that I'm pretty sure we gave you copies of the, I see it right there, gave you copies of the I from the schools, and others, some discussion of the schools at our last retreat. And we've received that in the last couple of years, I think. I don't know if I've ever, if I've ever directly copied it to you guys, but there's a copy, and we also have one in the lobby and on our website as well. Thanks for mentioning that.
Thank you. And on that, too, I'd like to say that the staff did a great job. Again, I commend the staff on the presentations they did to us at the retreat. It was very, very informative, and the staff was very knowledgeable about their areas, and I, we definitely were very impressed. And so hopefully, we can get some of the things that you all are requesting, and our next budget will certainly trial-bet. Next, we'll move on to mayor updates. Mayor's not here, and I don't have any at this time, so, does anyone have, you have any updates?
I'll just say that the next RPO meeting is this Thursday in Sanford, and I did communicate to the PBA co-chairs that the Christmas parade would be moving, and they were extremely happy about that, so.
Okay. Anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Well, I have, the Fairground Association, I don't have anything to report on that, but I did bring this Triangle J Council of Governments annual report, so this is a FYI for everyone. It gives you a general idea of some of the things that the Triangle J does, and basically, so if you get a chance, and the monies and different things like that, if you get the opportunity, you can certainly browse through that at your leisure. Do we have any, do we have any commissioner concern?
I have, I have a little old one, but I'll bring up again. I mentioned this, I don't know if you'll remember, but it has to do with the downtown curbs and the gutter and the, I was in town walking around, it was this weekend or the weekend before, and again, it's just collecting debris and just, you know, silt is building up, and I know it's because some of the curb has broken and moved, and it's obstructing the flow of the drainage, which is collecting and delivering debris to those pinch points. So I think it would go a long way towards making those curbs look a lot better if we could clear out those obstructions, so just, just going to take another look at that if you can.
We, we went through and cleaned those, those pinch points out once, and I think it's going to just, until they actually get fixed, that's kind of the same problem we're going to be faced with. Yes, and I did speak with Mr. Proteau about fixing the curbs. It was, it was my understanding that he's, he's holding off on the curbs at the moment until he's, he's pretty certain he has a good stretch of weather to do that detailed work that's required. I'll see what I can do to maybe move that schedule up a little bit.
I think that makes complete sense. No sense getting into construction and getting stuck in bad weather and making a mess, so that's good news, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, it's, but I, but I agree, and it's just one of those things. I was worried, I heard that complaint somewhere else, and I was worried that, oh, no, he didn't, no, they went through and they, they did fix it, but it's, it's any time we get any kind of rain in there, it doesn't even take much, it's just gathering more of that junk in there.
And there's a lot of grit on the road, and it's always going to, it's always on the road, and you don't see it when it flows well. When it pinches and bottles up, yeah, it deposits.
Thank you, Michael. Can we have any additional commissioner concerns and comments? Mr. Bruce Beck? Anything else?
Oh, and I'm all talk, though.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.